It's seven.
I believe we're on camera right now. We're just waiting for our chairman.
Oh, he's still not on?
Here, uh, nope.
He's never on time.
I just sent him a text and said we're missing him.
Year to renovate. They're hoping to open, as I've said before, early next year with the brew pub and the four apartments in the fire station. And then the 15 units over on Market Street would follow about six months later or so. So this is exciting news. And there's been a lot of work behind the scenes because we're also doing the land swap with between 15 and 17 Market and 17 Centennial. So I've been working with DHED. And today, actually, we got exciting news on that, that the deeds were approved, the town council had prepared. So those got forwarded up and now I'm just working out the title insurance issues. So learning a lot on the fly as to what is involved in exchanging, but right now we look like things knock on wood are going well. So hopefully we'll start to see activity out there later this spring. Um, for the housing production plan, as much as I'd like to forget it, I can't. Um, it's still in draft mode. I do have a second draft. I haven't yet published it yet just because we've been working on. I just didn't want to move on past the issues that were addressed that were brought up around the first round. So I don't know if you all have seen it, but there's actually a cable show circulating. You can watch it probably on demand. You can watch it on demand. Or it runs at regular, at certain times on the public access channel, but seven residents, it's not, it's, I'm not on it at all. So it's seven residents who've been involved in the process all along, sort of talking about why they think it matters. And, you know, I watched it myself. I wasn't, I didn't record it with them. And it was really good. So I would ask that if you have a chance to just put it on in the background and have a listen, because it really is interesting to hear the perspectives and, you know, hopefully lots of residents will check it out as well. Our next show that we're going to be doing to address issues raised had to do with concerns around water, infrastructure and demand on schools. So we're going to have, this is actually associated with the housing production plan, but I think in light of the year we had last year with water and the, and the trouble with the, well, not the trouble, the filtration plant was offline. And so there was some reduced water capacity last year. Plus the perennial droughts, droughts and water bans we all seem to have in this region. I felt like it would be a good conversation for people to have regardless of housing production plan or not. So Chris Gallagher is going to come in and maybe someone from the water department and just have a conversation about sort of where the town is on that and what the projections are there. So stay tuned. Temporary outdoor dining, we're doing that as well. We've been processing, did five applications so far, but we anticipate as the weather turns, we'll see, I think we did 18 to 20 last year. So we anticipate about the same. And certainly we are looking at it with favor at this point, you know, we, I think we've all learned that it's great to eat outside. And, and one thing we're seeing is some of these places that did temporary dining are starting to think about more permanent outdoor dining. So I think as a result of this pandemic, you know, a year or two, there'll be more opportunities for outdoor dining and it will all enjoy. Um, this is a new thing, my economic development. This was something I came up with just because I meet with so many people and, and I see their titles and then I feel, I feel jealous in a way because I do so much economic development and it's not in my title. And so, and then in the department, our department handles, you know, we, we staff the economic development committee and run the EDC website. We're doing the tourism thing. So it just feels like, I know Gordon had some concerns with the, of the naming and the titles back when. And like I said, I haven't talked about this with anybody, not even Gabby or Diana. But it was just something when I was writing this, I was like, I think I'd just seen someone's title and I was like, I feel like we should be called the Department of Planning and Economic Development. So just a thought. Again, I haven't asked anybody or talked to anybody, but I wondered what your reaction would be.
So here's a question for you. First of all, do, do we even have the right, let's say we all agreed to that. Do we even have the right to change that name from the Foxborough because it's an elected board, blah, blah, blah?
I don't think you need to change your name. It would be the name of like our department. It'd be like, you know, we'd still be the planning board, but we're called planning. I think it would just be, you guys would still be the planning board. It wouldn't change you. It would just be, we'd be the, the Department of Planning and Economic Development.
Assuming Bill Keegan can, would have to approve it though.
Oh yeah, we'd have to go, I wanted to bring it up with you folks first. I haven't, like I said, I haven't even raised this with anybody, what, you know, but yeah, I would have to go up whatever the chain of command is and how things are named. And I'm not sure of that. I just figured I'd start with you guys and see what your initial thoughts were on that.
I have no issues with it whatsoever. I think it's a great idea. It's more reflective of what you and, and Gabby and Diana do.
Anybody else have any thoughts?
I'd like to know what's involved in changing it and get some feedback from management.
Okay. So you don't mind me looking into it a little? I just didn't want to be poking around and, you know, doing anything where it looked like I had an agenda. I don't, I just felt like, you know, I guess I have, I have department title envy.
Wow. That's going to be going forward for a long, long length of time?
The what?
Yeah. Is this something that's going to be affecting us years from now or?
What?
The economic development. The economic development, but.
Oh yeah. I mean, that's a big.
We're just trying to get the center up and running and all that. And then, then you'll be, that role will be diminished a little bit?
I doubt it. I mean, first of all, that'll probably. I doubt it. I mean, first of all, that'll probably take 10 to 15 to 20 years. I mean, you know, and all these things take forever. I mean, the banners alone took three years.
Yeah. Where are those banners?
They're up, they're up, they're up. Um, but no, I don't think so. I mean, I think, you know, there's a website, there's an EDC. I mean, there's always, you know, there's, there's other parts and just uptown. It's also, you know, attracting, uh, business to route one and dealing with just sort of keeping businesses that are here. We want to make sure they feel listened to and, you know, they feel valued in a way. So they stay in Foxborough. So it's, it's a full, you know, a whole gamut of things. We, you know, there's always probably going to be the Foxborough Common Business Collaborative and, uh,
Wasn't there originally an economic development committee prior to you getting involved in it?
Yes.
There is an EDC.
Right. So, I mean, will you, will you always be spearheading this and doing most of the work? Hey, job. Will they eventually be taken over after you've done the heavy lifting?
No, I mean, you know, these are all volunteer boards and committees. So, you know, honestly, you guys tend to go back to your day jobs. And then it's the staff who has to sort of carry, you know, the, the jobs of the thing. So I think it's the same with the EDC where they're, you know, all volunteers. And they look to staff to, you know, help with certain projects or whatnot.
As I, as I said, I think it's, it's, it's going to provide a more accurate reflection of the work that you all do. And I also don't see any harm in it.
I definitely don't see any harm.
What?
I, I definitely do not see any harm in it. I just, you know, I, I, I was thinking kind of in terms of what Gary was in the original, his original question, which is, you know, do we even have the right to do that? I mean, and I have no problem with you like going to see, uh, Bill Keegan or talking to other people around town. All you think are relevant to that. And, um, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm not opposed to it.
Well, why don't I ask a few questions and I'll get back to you. It's no, it's nothing, you know, I do the job anyway. So it doesn't really matter. It's just more of a, you know, that'll know why we have people Google. You know, they'll see economic development in the title too. And it just for the, the department, you know, um, I see Norton, you know, the little town of Norton has such a robust economic development and planning division. And I'm like, hmm, you know?
Well, I think you better be thinking about what Gabby's new title is going to be.
I know. She'll have to, she could, she could think about that. All right. Well, I'll, I'll check that out and do a little research.
Well, what I was going to say is that, um, you know, when, uh, when Sharon started as the, the, the town planner, that's something that we discussed too. Because that, uh, when, uh, during her tenure is when the EDC started to, you know, become more, um, active. You know, it had been very inactive for a long time. And, uh, and so that's something that, that's been going on for a while. So this is, this is not something new. And I think that this is, um, is a very valid proposal that, that Paige is doing. Because the, uh, there's a lot more economic development work that's been, been done now than it used to be, you know, 10 years ago.
And we don't want to see, I think it keeps a spotlight on the economic development activity in the town. Though that it maybe will help avoid that group going dormant again.
Well, that being said, wouldn't community development be more, more encompassing of the whole town? And actually more representative of what you do. You, you deal with the whole town, not just the economic development of the businesses in the center.
Well, that, that's true, Gar. But I mean, I think the, uh, the fact that we did the, you know, the overall plan, the growth plan and everything. And, and talked about the different zones, uh, you know, of importance economically. And, you know, rule one is going to be not, not to slight anyone else, it's going to be its own engine forever. Because of the stadium, all the guys who own parking lots up there, and they have their own businesses, many of them on the, on the road there. So they have an interest and they're going to make sure that their interest is, is fulfilled as much as they can. I think a lot of what's been happening since, since this committee kind of re got, got reformed is while that's still out there. There's a lot more paying of attention to uptown and the zone that's over closer to Mansfield. And seeing what we can do to make sure, well, the, the epidemic kind of, but the pandemic sort of put a kibosh on a lot of whatever we were going to do. But it's, you know, as things open up again, I think it's going to be important that we pay attention to them. And you're right about that, Gar. I think that those areas, um, they don't have the, they're, they're not an economic engine like route one is. So they need somebody behind them to help them, you know, get stuff moving. And a lot of the grant money that we've gotten has been, has been parlayed into those areas. You know, the, you know, the roundabout stuff we're talking about now over on route 140 potentially, you know, the new, the, the, maybe the new housing that'll go up on Walnut Street. All that's going to figure into that.
Yeah. More community development than economic development. That's why, that's why I brought that up. Still thought.
Well, to be discussed further.
Yeah.
Um, so we hit another milestone on our regional destination marketing plan. As you recall, we got a grant from the Mass Gaming Commission. It was in two stages. The first one was actually the plan that was done last, uh, finished last June. And, um, I had a lot going on. So I just finally got to doing the RFP and getting proposals for the website design. So we got two proposals back and we went with the one, they both were very qualified and we went with the lowest cost proposal. Um, we also brought on the person who wrote the original plan to help populate it. So we now have a website under design. And this is for the towns of Foxborough, Plainville and Rentham to attract visitors to our region. Um, you know, whether it's day visitors, overnight visitors, conferences. And we're, we're feeling like now's a, we're kind of pushing it a little bit right now because we feel like for the next year or so, there might be a lot of driving visits going on. And folks looking for new things to do in the region. So we're going to have things like itineraries, you know, outdoor itineraries. If you're in our region, or if you have four hours to spare, you could go do these things. Or if you're into, um, you know, sports or gambling. So we'll have different itineraries for folks to, um, to follow. So that was an exciting milestone. Yeah.
Quick question, if I could, is, does, it, does the article that you posted on LinkedIn about Foxborough, which was fabulous, and I shared it all over the place. Was that part of that initiative?
No, that was just separate. Um, that was Bill Keegan. I don't know if they approached him or he approached them, but it was, um, it was in Business View Magazine. For those who don't know, there's an article about Foxborough this month, and it just highlighted Foxborough and a lot of the economic and community development initiatives. So no, that was totally separate. That was just sort of a, hey, we're here and we're here, people, you know, don't forget Foxborough, look at what we have to offer.
Okay. I was just wondering.
Um, and then the grants, I'll whip through these. We've got a few out there. Um, I might've gone over them before, so I don't want to belabor it. But the, the first one, the downtown initiative, local rapid recovery, I spent the afternoon out, um, out uptown Tuesday, I think it was with, uh, the consultant. And now I'm really excited about it. I didn't know when I first talked to you about it, what we were getting. But I feel like this is going to be, um, good for the short and long term for uptown. My main goal is to get some real strategies for the central street parking lot and sort of how we can improve that area. And like, maybe eventually we can get grants to help with that. Um, but also other initiatives to help support uptown. Um, this grant is specifically focused on uptown. That's called, uh, the, the Massachusetts Downtown Initiative. So that's why this one is all uptown and nothing else. Um, we're kicking off the, um, RFP development project for the Walnut Street project. We have our first meeting on April 8th. So that's exciting and, uh, we'll get that going. Um, the shared streets program, I, I attached a photo or not a photo, but a diagram of the schematic that was proposed to the selectmen. Um, before people freak out, um, it would only be done on a trial basis.
I'm freaking out.
It would be done by May. So it's a short-term trial. It's obviously, um, but the, one of the goals is for two reasons. One is addressing the fact that when you go down to South, South Street and/or Central, that if you're not in the outside lane, you know, people cut across. So that was the main goal. That's our phase two. As you know, we've been working on that. Um, the second one is we've been trying like heck to figure out how to make the pedestrian experience better up there. And it's really hard when you have 15,000 cars going through there a day. Um, so this was a way of improving, kind of like what Gordon wanted. This would provide, this is a test to see if you provided a sidewalk on the outside of the common, outside the fence. You know, rather than having it right now, people back or pull in right up to the fence and then they have to walk in the back. So this is a trial to see how that would work. Um, we'll see, you know, we, we just know that Gordon has always said that. And we thought that we'll try one side just because, um, it's going to be that side that gets more activity later, you know, when Shovel Town opens and whatnot. So we're, we're, we're going to give it a, well, actually, let me put it this way, we haven't even gotten approved. So we might not get funded and this might all be moot. But if we do get funded, there may be a trial demonstration project going up in the month of May to try things out.
So, so in looking at that, my initial concern was not that I've, not that I've ever been in love with the angle parking up there. Because it's hard to back out and people aren't that skilled at it. And, you know, it's dangerous. But especially with Shovel Town coming and, and the theater are going to be being reopened and stuff. That's a main area for parking in the town. So if we were losing that to like six spaces here and three spaces there and six spaces here, compared to the dozens of spaces that we have, how, how does that impact? I mean, yeah, you're on the one hand, you're getting a pedestrian benefit and I like that. I think that, you know, for things like the farmer's market and other things that, that happen up there, the, the, the music that the J C's do, it will make it more attractive. But when you look at, you know, uh, Shovel Town and other things that are happening uptown theoretically that, that are going to change. How does that diminishment of parking affect the overall parking program in the uptown area?
I don't believe we lose any parking, Kevin.
Well, it looked like it to me when I looked at the diagram.
I'll have to go back and look, but I'm pretty sure we do not. I, I remember that was the main reason why it wasn't, it, no one wants to lose any parking out there. So it was even either, even swap or maybe one more or one less, but it wasn't a loss because it's.
Okay. Maybe I, maybe I, maybe I just looked at it too quickly and didn't count exactly. So.
Yeah. Um, we agree on that.
Yeah.
And, and we were actually hesitant about the parallel parking, but then they pointed out, well, you know, central street has parallel and that's what South Street has. So maybe, you know, as a trial to see if it, we're, we're all a little suspicious of what, you know, or skeptical of whether, how this will work.
Yeah.
Um, but we, none of us really likes the, the head in either.
Yeah.
And, you know, so it's kind of like, how do we fit, you know, this is an opportunity for the state to pay for us to maybe try something.
Right.
It might not work. We might have to rip it out day two, you know, or something like that. But if the state, you know, funds it, we might want to give it a try.
And one other thing back to your, the comment you made earlier about the public parking lot in the back of Central Street.
Yes.
Just, just keep in mind that many, maybe not all of them, but many of the store owners, their lots actually extend deep into there. They, they, which gives them rights theoretically, which never happened, to extend their buildings beyond where they are today. Into that, further into that parking area. So, you know, and it may never happen. And, you know, and maybe they'll love all the plans we come up with, but you should just have that in the back of your mind. When you do whatever we do, just so either if we need to, if, if we need to do some, something with the town to get permission or to get people to get buy into it or whatever. So we don't run into a thing where, you know, Joe's, Joe's convenience store says, well, I, I'm allowed to have another 50 feet. So I'm building my store out. And then it screws up all the parking arrangement or the planning that you're doing there. That's all.
No, that's a very good point. And I did share that I have that diet, you know, the plan that shows all the easement areas, but that's a good point. And maybe we could have a couple phases, like the, you know, the smaller profiles versus a full build. And maybe we could convince people. I, from what I've heard of the process to get that parking lot together.
Oh my God.
Um, I do dread that thought of even trying to get multiple parties to coordinate it. I mean, I almost feel that it'll never happen. But like Tracy said, I'm, I'm being positive these days. So I'm going to, uh, you know, maybe there's some magic can happen. And maybe eventually there will be some way to make that, you know, a true parking lot that people feel comfortable and proud of, but maybe not. And I, I thank you. That's a good perspective.
I mean, I, I don't want to rain on it because I would love the idea to get it to be better. Um, and just keep in mind that, you know, uh, the very first parking plan had worse buggies on it. So.
Yeah. Um, and then lastly, you know how I keep trying to get folks to apply for these micro enterprise grants? Well, I owe, I owe everybody an apology because I attended a meeting yesterday and I learned how horrible the whole thing is. Um, I'm, I'm embarrassed to even talk about it. And we were with five communities on this grant. It was, the regulations are stipulated by HUD. It's being administered by DHCD at the state level. And then you hire a consultant who has to grant, you know, run the grant per all the regulations. Um, unbeknownst to me, oh, when we just got the summary yesterday for all five communities, 57 applicants, two awards.
What?
Yeah.
Why?
No one, the regulations are so strict with respect to double dipping or like unemployment, this or that, like it, it's very intricate. It's the federal government. So the, the point being is, is the consultant was so apologetic and she was saying, you know, it's not our fault per se, but like, I wish we hadn't even tried this. That said, the good thing is, is the state has kind of seen that, you know, the money's not being given away. We're still all sitting on 300 something thousand dollars, which is so frustrating. So there has been some movement as to lightening up the, some of the paperwork requirements, maybe not counting certain unemployment things. You know, not, the problem is, is if people got PPE, then they might not be able to, unless they could prove these losses and the proof of losses were real hard. It's very intricate, but I would say to folks now, if you did apply, first of all, I'm so sorry. Second of all, maybe get in touch with me because apparently things are going to be loosened up to the point. And we are going to look at the applicant. Well, I don't look at anything, but they're going to look at the applications again and see if anybody can comply. But if we're missing anybody, they promised me it's going to get a little easier. So, um, I'm so sorry. I, I, you know, I had high hopes that this money would be given out, but for whatever reason, the, the federal and the state government are making it a little difficult. And, um, it hasn't been given out. So it's frustrating. And then lastly, something not on my planner's report, but I attended a meeting today, um, with the police, fire and a variety of folks. And they were talking about a possible, um, solar canopy over the public safety building parking garage, not parking garage, parking lot. You know, um, primarily I get the sense is that the, the police and fire want it because it protects their vehicles. It's almost like, uh, um, you know, I think originally there was a carport proposed to protect some of the vehicles, but it was cut by budget. So they're looking, I think they're looking at it as beneficial, not just from the solar perspective, but the, the wear and tear on their vehicles. Um, but also there would be some, you know, financial benefit to the, to the community. Um, in our meeting, we met with Barry, the building commissioner and whatnot. And it looks like there's some zoning challenges to this. So it might not be able to be done. Um, so the question was raised of whether, if it was required a zoning change, is that something the planning board might consider supporting or like, what's your gut instinct on canopies over?
What are, what are the zoning challenges?
Um, the, the accessory uses can only represent 15% of the floor area. So they could only have a 7,000 square foot solar thing based on the current interpretation.
What, and what zone is that in?
It's in the neighborhood, neighborhood business and it's also in the, the chestnut case overlay.
Yeah.
Um, so we have to work out a little bit of the zoning analysis, but, uh, you know, because there were setback issues as well. But it feels like the setback issues could be addressed, but if, if it's only limited to 7,000 square feet, it won't work. They were talking more like 15,000, you know, over the parking lot or not all of it, but a bulk of it.
So let me ask you this, how did, how did the town, uh, get around whatever the regulations were over at the, at the landfill? And over at, you know, across from the, the public safety building?
Those weren't considered accessory. Those are principal uses. So this is because, you know, there's a limitation on accessory to 15%. So we're, you know, this is the first, today's the first day we're looking at it and I just happened to be meeting with the group. And we all came to the conclusion that it might not happen. And then they were like, well, should we go to town meeting? And it was like, they were like, oh, do you think the planning board would support it? Said, I don't know, but I happened to be meeting with them in two and a half hours. So I can ask them. So I thought I'd get a temperature read on if a zoning change is required down the road for this. How does the board feel about solar canopies over parking lots? Cause I could say that many communities I go to, I see them everywhere.
Well, I can tell you that, that, um, there was a point when Schneider took over and they redid the building over on, um, on mechanic street, where the entrance is on mechanic street, that they had a plan to do exactly what you're talking about, which was a canopy use. And they were going to allow their employees to park underneath them. And I don't know if there's a difference in that zone, but they, you know, they're, at the time, I think that they had passed whatever the sniff test was. And then for whatever reasons, I'm sure, uh, John could tell us why they actually didn't do it because it got close. I mean, I know they, they priced it out and everything. So I don't know why. And I don't see that, that would be any more of a primary use. And they have a big parking lot there.
Maybe their building is that much bigger that the 15% could have caught, you know?
Just, is it just the building or the entire footprint?
I think it's the building. I don't really remember. We couldn't, no one knew whether it was gross floor area or just floor area, but all together. I think it's the combination of all the area, interior areas of the floor. They were discussing whether it's like exterior of the foundation or interior of the foundation to calculate.
Kevin, is that the one the planning board addressed a couple, three years back?
You mean with, with Schneider?
Was it Schneider that we had addressed? They wanted to put a large one up and we?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah.
We also saw one with, um, media one tried it for like 10 minutes in a year. Remember they continued for like a year, but we might've seen that for about 10 minutes before they went back to the drawing board.
You mean, you mean, uh, Xfinity?
Yeah, but they came in under like media one for whatever reason. Yeah.
And, um, well, I think, I, I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to consideration of a zoning change myself, but I think we'd have to be careful about how we delineated it. So it didn't become the I or C pod. Now, you know, well, there's a little space over there by my pearl. Can we do? Now, you know, well, there's a little space over there by my pearl. Can we do, can we do it over there? You know what I'm saying? It's like everybody, all of a sudden they're popping up everywhere over there. But I think, and especially because it's a municipal benefit, um, uh, I, I think that carries a little bit more weight and it doesn't include the lot between their lot and the, and the, um, the assembly building, the, the, the old building there.
I don't think so. No, I think it's just their parking lot from, based on the, the pictures I was seeing or the, uh, plans.
The main, the main one where the front doors are the one that the back side of it.
I think backside more.
That's what I thought. Okay.
Side and back. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
What town vehicles do they actually park outside? And police probably has a couple, but most of the vehicles are moving all the time.
The person.
And everything is inside.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Is this to keep the snow off the town employees?
I don't know.
It's a good point, Carrie.
You know what? Town employees don't want to get snow on them, so we should support that.
Maybe we should throw that one also at the town hall, you know?
Okay. With a little walkway to the building.
There you go.
Yeah. No, um, all right. Well, I just, anybody violently opposed to it? I mean, worth just, you're willing to consider it with the right parameters?
Yeah, it's gotta be the right parameters. Yeah. You don't want one behind the office of the old, uh, hospital building now.
Right, right.
So you have to be careful.
Yeah, Vinnie, Vinnie would be right on that.
Yeah, he really would be.
Okay, that's all for my planner's report then. Thank you.
Anything in active subdivisions, Ken?
Uh, no.
Okay. And, uh, the minutes from January fourteenth, have they been reviewed and all that, Diana?
Um, I sent them out, uh, beginning of February, so I never heard anything bad about them. So I guess they're okay.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes for January fourteenth.
There we go.
Second.
Those in favor?
I.
Roll call.
Kevin.
You guys have to be like the Board of Selectmen. They seem to have an order worked out. You guys got to figure out, everybody take a number and that's your order.
Okay. I'm sure, I mean, it should be right in our little box there. One, two, three, you know?
Exactly.
So did we get enough eyes on that to say yes?
Yes.
But yes. Okay, um, the next thing on the agenda is an A N R for eighteen Baker Street. Ah, Mr. Leslie.
Ah, good evening, Mr. Chairman.
How are you?
How are you? I'm Rich Leslie with Bay Colony Group and I'm representing, uh, representing Mill Street Limited Partnership. And this is for, uh, eighteen Baker Street. It's a, um, it's, I'm sorry, I'm not looking at the wrong thing. It's a parcel lands located on the Westley side of Baker Street. It's approximately three hundred feet south of Bentwood Ave. It's, I'm going to pull up a, a copy of the, um, plan here. Can you all see that?
No.
Oh, no.
Right.
I'll go back to zoom. Click on right there, zoom me, click share, no, left, left, left.
There we go. How about now?
Yes.
Yeah. I'm getting, I'm getting tutelage here as we go through this. All right. So here, here's our locus parcel right here. It, it's, it's comprised of two parcels shown on assesses map number one seventy nine. It's parcel one twenty three, which is this parcel from Baker Street and it goes back to this dash line right here. And parcel one twenty one, which comes off of Orchard Place and again, goes back to that same line. And what we've done is what I've created is an A and R plan, subdivided the parcel into lot one, which has sufficient area and frontage on Baker Street. And parcel A, which although it has sufficient area, it does lack frontage. So it's therefore labeled as a non-buildable, not conforming lot due to insufficient frontage. But that's really it. It's, it's pretty straightforward. You know, I can entertain any questions right now as I'm sure there are. So.
So the only, the only question I have initially is I, I heard, uh, I don't even know where I heard it, but there was a question that came up about the existing septic system that's for the house and whether that falls somewhere across the new line.
It, we didn't do it. We got a copy of the ASBIL plan and we superimposed it on this plan and it does not fall. It does not fall on parcel A.
The leaching facility doesn't either?
From the plan that we plotted, yeah, no, it does not. It's, it's all on lot one.
Is it me that required setback, Rich?
Oh, it, it more than does. It's, um, the front setbacks are.
No, I meant on the leaching field.
Fifteen, thirty. And we have thirty seven off the front. Our closest side is twenty seven and our rear is over forty.
No, I meant the field.
Oh, the leaching field?
Yes.
I don't know. I, I don't, can't answer. Again, we, we had what we plotted. Is it on here somewhere?
Yeah, do you have the plot? You can share with us.
You're gonna have to go back and out and share it again.
Okay, hold on.
No, we can see it.
You can see it?
Yeah. Just enlarge it a little more. There you go.
One more. Here, here it is right here. This red line is the line we're proposing.
Right.
And this setback is ten feet, isn't it?
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah. And the minimum setback is ten feet and it, it appears to be that.
It's gotta be ten feet from the red line?
Yes. Okay, yeah, yeah.
Okay, is, is, so you're saying that is ten feet? Cause I'm seeing twelve feet.
That's up top. That's up top, correct.
Yeah. It could be, I mean, we, we really don't know. And you're right. It looks like maybe it might be eight or nine. But again, that is not, not to be argumentative, but that it really has nothing to do with subdivision control. It's on the lot.
I will say Tracy, that is true. Unfortunately, um, well, fortunately, unfortunately for approval, not required plans, that's the title of it. Cause it really doesn't require approval of the planning board. Basically, if they have sufficient frontage, then the planning board is required to sign it. So actually, under the A and R rules, they could actually put a lot line through the house and the planning board would still have to sign it. That said, they then have trouble with zoning enforcement and they'd have a big problem, but it, the, this instrument, the A and R process is not meant to catch every zoning thing. It's only to make sure there's sufficient access. And the way they, this is stipulated is through the frontage. So this lot does have sufficient frontage. It also does have area. If they do anything that runs a file of the Board of Health, that would become a Board of Health enforcement issue. It's not something the planning board can enforce at this point.
Thanks, Paige. That's what I thought.
Kevin, anybody else? Well, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, do you want a motion?
Um, well, I was just going to ask if there's anybody else has any questions or comments before we do that. Hearing none, then, uh, yes, I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve, um, the S A and R at eighteen Baker Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
Very good. Uh, uh, one at a time. Can I get people to, uh, to, uh, vote in the affirmative or negative?
Why don't you just call our names out, Kevin? I think it'll be safer.
Okay, Tracy, why don't you start?
Okay, yay, yes.
Uh, Gary?
Yay.
Ron?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Kevin? Yes.
Okay, are you happy? We, we did it even better than the Board of Selectmen.
You were wonderful. Very impressed.
Good job, Kevin.
My, my pleasure, Tracy. Very good. Um.
So we'll, I'm sorry, um, we'll have the plan, the Mylar plan in the office. So we'll need the, uh, board to stop by the office next week to sign that for us, please.
You know what day it'll be ready, Gabby?
It's ready now.
Okay.
Okay, um, so that's it on that, I believe. I mean, the only, the only other thing that's just out there in, in this is that as, as, uh, Rich mentioned, that parcel A now becomes a non-buildable lot. And anything going forward would have to come through with this, with an application for a subdivision, and then that decision would be held in a separate formal hearing process. So, um, I think that's it on that particular item. If anybody else has any questions or comments, feel free. Uh, let's move along.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, the next item is a site plan waiver request from Schneider Electric at seventy mechanic street. Oh, it's all about this page.
Okay, so this is, I'm actually just trying to load up the file. I forgot to upload it, but, um, this is actually a minor little thing. Um, they're seeking a waiver. I came through our office this week. It's really just a shed at the back of the bill, the big building there. So let me just see if I can pull up these plans. I have a picture that should show it to you, the scale, the scale of it rather well. Um, give you some perspective. So I'm going to go ahead and try to share my screen. So let's try this, share screen. And here we go, share. All right. So let me zoom in a bit to give you the perspective. So this is the big, just for perspective, this is the big building there. We're, we're looking at the very back.
Not there.
We only see a black screen page.
Okay, hold on. My computer's not responding. So just one second. It's mad at me. Do you see anything now or still no?
Yeah.
Sorry about that. My computer's been very angry today. Um, so let me just show you this. Okay. So this is the big building and down here is the little shed they're seeking. Actually, it might be two sheds, I think. They're seeking to add, um, behind the building. So, um, you know, Barry just ran it by us and we said, since the planning board is meeting this week, it makes sense to just have you guys, I figured you'd probably waive it and not require site plan review for this minor change. Um, so I'm asking that you grant a waiver for this minor, um, change to the site plan to allow this shed.
So they're gonna, I, I, you know, one, one, the, the thing that you had online earlier, it says electrical equipment is removed and new to be installed in existing location. Is that, is that where the sheds are?
Hi, this is Jason with Chapman. I'm actually representing Schneider, um, and I might be able to help speak for this.
Please do.
They had some existing electrical equipment, um, transformers that they're removing. And they're proposing to install a new, um, tw- five hundred and twenty square foot shed to house some compressors. For the, you know, and, and they're building the shed just to keep the noise requirements, um, for the neighbors.
Okay.
So if you go, um, up a little bit, Paige, it'll show the rendering of just what the shed will look like. So that was the existing. This is the proposed shed.
Right.
Is this picture the right one?
Yep, that'd be great. So that's, that's the rendering of the proposed shed that we're looking to install. It's, uh, twenty by twenty six.
I don't have an issue. I don't know if anybody else.
I have no issue at all with this.
None. I'm inclined to waive it.
So do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion to waive.
Um, all right, uh, all those, well, let's, let's start with Tracy.
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Kevin, yes. Very good.
Thank you, everyone.
You're welcome. Next item is zoning amendments. It publicly, public hearings, wowee zowee.
Brad, are you bored yet?
He looks very stimulated right now. Look at him, red eyed and bushy tail. Paige is just happy as a clam.
So with being sometime after seven fifteen P M, we have a zoning amendment, public hearing to amend sections three point one point six, table three dash one, table of uses subsection G dot twelve, assisted living facility, nursing or convalescent home. Would you like to walk us through that page?
Yes. Well, let me make sure I'm on the right screen though, because obviously, let's see, I gotta get to that one, right? Um, here we go, this one.
That one, yes.
Okay. So do you see this right now? The, okay. So just for, I know you all know this, but for the folks watching at home, um, we found a mistake. Actually, Gabby discovered a mistake in our, our zoning code that would allow nursing homes, assisted livings and convalescent homes in the R forty district and pretty much every other district by right. So that what that means is you could have a nursing home next to your house. Um, we don't believe anybody intended to do that. Um, so here's, uh, we checked back and we found that prior to this change that inexplicably showed up, um, it was a planning board site plan, I mean, planning board special permit required for, um, for all districts except S one, which it was prohibited. Um, and now today it's a Y in all districts, except it says, so, so a special permit in L I and in S one. So we are proposing to put it back to where it was prior to this inexplicable change. So that it would be a s- a special permit in all districts except S one, which would continue to be a no.
Paige, is the use table, uh, consistent with the text or i- is that an issue as well?
Um, this is the use table. See the, uh, so it's actually, we're changing the use table itself. Um, I cut and paste from the little table right there for that's to show what twelve was and what it is now.
Uh, correct, but is there tech, is there a text section, uh, related to this? There's not?
No.
Okay. So ju- just a question, I don't, I don't really know if you would even know this, Paige, but, but, uh, I don't recall this. I mean, I remember seeing it the way it's here, but was it, what was the reasoning behind it being denied in the S one, you know?
I don't, and I actually debated whether to propose something different, you know, but for this instance, I decided to keep it clean. My hunch is, is that based on sort of the master plan discussion and whatnot, my guess is that folks were concerned about having something like a nursing home on the other side of Route one on a game day. So that's a guess I saw is that maybe people didn't want that.
Yeah, that rings a bell now that you said that.
Yeah. So I think we could, you know, if we ever wanted to look at it, but I think right now it's most important to clean this mess up.
There was a, cause you're, you know, now that you brought that up, I remember this now. There was a concern that God forbid there was us, any kind of a health issue. And how would the ambulance or the fire truck be able to get in and out of there and get somebody out to the hospital or, or whatever, you know, in the middle of a game. So, or, 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 you know, before enter a game. So you're right. Okay. Uh, do I hear a motion to, uh, approve this unless there's other?
Anybody in the public or I'm sure that, that, that there's just hundreds of people online waiting to ask questions about zoning.
You, you are right. So if there is anyone from the public who has any questions or comments about this change, can you please just, uh, state your name and address for the record and speak up?
Don't everybody go at once.
Well, hearing none, then I will entertain a motion to make the change back. It's been proposed by Paige.
So moved.
Okay, um, individually, Tracy?
Yes.
Uh, Gary?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Kevin, yes.
Great, thank you. And I assume with that, um, vote, you're, you're, you're recommending adoption. So yes.
Yes.
All right, um, it being, oh, do we need to close that public hearing?
You just did with the vote.
Okay, very good. So it being sometime best for seven twenty P M, we have another zoning amendment, public hearing, remove section nine point three floodplain overlay district F pod and replace with a new section nine point three floodplain overlay district F pod.
Yes. So this one, I'm hoping there aren't too many questions because I, I'll admit that my knowledge of flooding and whatnot is really more of an engineering purview, but of course this ended up on my desk because it's zoning. Um, basically what it is, is we have no choice. Um, the FEMA runs the flood program for the federal government. Um, and in Massachusetts, um, I think it's the D C R or something, we, the state runs it for the federal government. So we've been told by D C R, um, all towns have that they have to update their floodplain bylaw and they actually provided a model bylaw, which is what we're proposing. Um, we did have, uh, a lot of review of it, you know, we tweaked it, Barney over it, reviewed it for us. He's always a very valuable reviewer. He catches, uh, he streamlines things for us. But basically it has, every time we make a change to this floodplain bylaw, I have to send it back to this woman, Joy Dupert, who was actually wonderful and did most of the work for me. Um, so basically the, the reason, what happens if we don't adopt this is that the residents of the town would not be. Um, so basically, the, the reason, what happens if we don't adopt this is that the residents of the town would not be eligible for flood insurance. So obviously, it's kind of a no-brainer. Um, the good thing is, is Foxborough isn't really, doesn't have a lot of the quote-unquote bad flood zones. Um, and from what I'm hearing, this isn't something that affects a lot of people and a lot of projects in this town. Um, but we don't really have a choice, so we are proposing that you adopt the model bylaw as customized for Foxborough.
That being said, I'll make a motion to approve.
Do we have to ask for public?
Yeah.
Questions?
If there are, yeah, any, anybody in the public who's uh, who's viewing this and would like to make a question or ask a question or make a comment, please just state your name and address for the record and then feel free to weigh in. Anyone? Hearing none, Gar, please go ahead.
I make a motion to approve as described and explained.
Second.
Very good. Um, Tracy?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Kevin, yes.
Great.
Thank you very much. And the final continued public hearing for this evening, it being sometime past seven fifteen, is um, Maple, the Maple Place Isaacson Solar On-Site Ground Mounted Solar Folded Vatek Installation. So um, Brad or, or whomever, would you like to uh, just present whatever new facts or details or drawings you'd like us to look at this evening?
Mr. Chair, this is Mike Corey, um, attorney for uh, Isaacson and the uh, and the property owner. Um, just to give a brief recap, we uh, at nine, uh, Maple Place, uh, Isaacson Solar had pulled a building permit um, that was inadvertently issued uh, without going through this board for a special permit on a um, a ground mount solar um, array. Um, we've gone through a, a couple of uh, hearings uh, with the planning board. And um, Isaacson and Brad, the male of Isaacson, uh, along with the property owner have revised the plan. Um, it provides now for a, um, a ground array that's moved back a considerable uh, degree from the property line, which was where it was originally located. And also surrounded uh, on two sides, um, where it would be visible to the neighbors, a forty-two foot fence, a forty-two foot run of a six-foot tall fence, and then a twenty-four foot run um, at the other angle. Um, what um, what Brad from Isaacson has submitted uh, to Paige, um, uh, is some landscaping renderings uh, that show um, what that would look like to the neighbors. There would be barely anything, and, and uh, Paige, you're pointing, pointing that out. You posted that, uh, as you can see from the um, uh, the picture, uh, that Paige has uh, provided, the previous photo, there's barely any of the uh, top of the uh, array um, pointing uh, uh, above the uh, above the six-foot fence. Uh, it would be um, uh, pretty much, very well covered for anyone uh, at the street level. Um, uh, the Ilinski's really need to have some solar energy um, uh, being um, uh, generated from their property. And as you know, the, the um, zoning code does not prohibit them from doing, from uh, establishing it on their roof. Ideally, the um, if we were to do a, to do a roof um, setup, it would be on the garage. Uh, but that would be unsightly for the neighbors. Um, and the Ilinski's want to, uh, wanna be good neighbors and have uh, move, have, are proposing now to move the um, uh, the array back substantially and, and Brad can get into the actual um, measurement of that movement. Uh, and put uh, this fence around, which provides a buffer. Um, Brad, could you just highlight uh, the changes uh, in terms of measurement?
Yeah, sure. Um, thank you, everybody, for hearing us out here again. Um, you know, we're, we're looking to, to go back to the drawing board to make this acceptable for um, the neighborhood and, and hopefully to pass a vote tonight. So um, what we're proposing is changing the slope of the original array um, from it being um, about thirty degrees down to a twenty-degree slope. Um, so that's a significant change of upwards of thirty percent, basically reducing that angle from, you know, this to flattening, flattening that uh, that angle out, um, so that it's not as, it's not as high. Um, what we also are doing is we're removing the top row of uh, of solar panels. So this, this first proposed design, if you wanna go to that first page, um, you can see that it's five rows high now. Originally, it was six rows high with a thirty-degree angle, so we're gonna be changing that, basically have to rip it um, completely out of the ground, uh, and, and redo some steel and reduce the, the angle from thirty degrees down to twenty. And we're also removing the sixth row of panels and relocating that uh, to the east edge, which is in towards uh, Alex's property, uh, not towards the street side. So basically, just taking those six panels off the top, putting them on the right side. And that's effectively gonna lower the height of the entire uh, ground mount by four and a half feet. Um, so as it stands, or originally proposed, was supposed to be about twelve and a half feet high. And now um, it will be um, I believe eight and a half, eight to eight and a half feet high. Um, and also substantially lower to the ground. Couple that with the white uh, vinyl fence and the planting of marble varieties on the north side of that vinyl fence and the north side of the ground mount, so that all parties from, you know, vehicle perspective or from, you know, even a pedestrian walking down the road, um, you know, the system is not invisible by any means. Um, however, it is not the focal point of view shed for pedestrians or from uh, traffic on this dead-end street. If there are any questions, I'd happily go into this.
Could somebody go to the photo, the, the street level one, please? Am I looking towards Coacit or away from Coacit?
Way. You're coming up the road from Coacit, aren't you?
No, the other way.
You're going towards the dead end.
Oh, okay, right, because there's the street lane. Okay, I couldn't see what that said.
Brad, you wanna, were you sticking with the eight-foot-tall fence versus the six? Because we.
Well, it's eight, it's eight on the twenty-four-foot side and six on the forty-two-foot side.
Right, I just, at one point, we talked about that in a permit, anything over six feet or seven feet requires a permit. So I just wanted to make everybody aware of that and, and I know there was a discussion of, you know, I don't know how the Jepson would feel, but um, I just wanna make sure we're clear, because the plan does show eight feet, and if that's what will be more memorialized.
The uh, the original sketch, um, needs, it was six feet. Um, so actually, I, it was, it was my fault. The graphic designer uh, unintentionally put in the eight-foot tall section. So if six foot is acceptable, that's, that's what we would like to do here.
All around.
Considerable, um, considerable amount of money for uh, Mr. Alinsky. There's a, there's a huge uh, cost increase to go from a six foot to, to an eight foot.
So you're saying six feet on both sides?
Yes, ma'am. And again, the, the top edge, uh, the rear of this uh, system is, is basically eight foot tall. Um, so you, so you would see just the top uh, two foot of uh, of the black solar panel um, from that. But the, the vast majority of the system would be concealed.
Any questions from the board members?
None here.
I, I have a question. So do I correct, am I correct to understand that if this is not permitted, then the carport slash collector would be going forward? Is that a definite? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, um, Mr. Alinsky needs to, needs the uh, uh, needs the solar gen- solar power generation. Uh, he'd prefer not to do that, and it would be visible to the entire neighborhood if it's on the garage. Um, he hasn't made a definitive decision, but uh, if he were to go that way, you know, it's, it's governed by the state code, but um, would, would based on this?
Design be allowed by right?
Yeah, on the garage? Yeah.
On a carport, you're talking about a new structure, carport area, correct?
No, no, the existing, the existing garage.
Okay.
So it would be by right?
Okay.
I, I'd like to hear from the neighbors, Kevin.
Yeah, so would I. I was just waiting to see if anybody else on the board had questions or comments. So uh, and yes, please, if any of the uh, the butters, neighbors, or people in the neighborhood um, have questions or comments at this point with the new redesign, can you please just state your name and address for the record and let us uh, hear what you have to say?
Yeah, hi Kevin, it's Peter Jepson.
Hi, Mr. Jeff.
Yeah, good, good evening. Uh, yeah, I'm Three Maple Place. I have bought the fence. You, you know where I am, yeah. So, but I'm looking at this uh, duh, this picture, but what is that big tree on the, on the right side? I, I mean, that doesn't exist. Unless I'm missing something. I mean, this is shot from Maple Place up toward the house, but I see this, this huge tree.
Can anybody?
Is that, that must be imposed, superimposed.
Can anybody address that, either Brian?
I'm on the tree line there, uh, Mr. Jepson, on the um, on the south side of uh, Alex's property to the east side of his uh, garage. Um, this photo was taken in November, I believe, or early December, and then our graphic designer went in and gave a visual representation of uh, the foliers that would be there in the.
I mean, i- i- it makes it appear that it, it would buffer my side, but in reality, there's trees, there's no trees there.
There, there.
There are.
Who said there are?
I, I, I mean, there's no tree, there's no tree that buffers me from his property. I mean.
Backyard, you're.
If, if you're gonna speak, and please make sure you state your name and your address.
Or, or, oh, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, who is it?
Oh, this is uh, this is Alex Ilinski. Uh, yes, that is the tree that's already there. Um, it never got cut down. That's the tree in full bloom closest to detached garage.
Yeah.
So, so if Alex, if I'm looking at the garage, would it be to the left side of it and sort of slightly to the side there?
Yes, if you're looking straight at the garage, it's gonna be a, a little, uh, it's to the left of it at a forty-five-degree angle.
So that's your driveway, Alex?
Yes, that's my driveway.
Okay.
So, so just to be clear, the uh, the Isaacson mentioned they're gonna push the solar panel back. So it's gonna be back behind that tree? Is that what I'm talk, hearing? Or, I'm not sure where exactly the, the solar panel is, is gonna be situated in relation to where it is now.
It's in the same location, Peter. Uh, we're just lowering the height of it, basically.
Okay, so it's not, it's not moving, you're reconfiguring it and it's lowering the, the angle of it?
Yes.
Correct.
I'm sorry, I misspoke.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Mo, I'm sorry, I, I, my understanding is if we moved it back, then it would go uphill and then it would be more visible, so we leave it where it is.
I see, okay, alright. No, I'm not, I'm not trying to sabotage your plan or anything, I just wanna be clear on what's going down, you know?
Absolutely.
But that, but to be clear, for, for real, I mean, that, that tree is showing, it, it kinda makes it seem like it's, you know, blocks my view kind of toward the house, and it absolutely doesn't. I mean, I can see the house clearly. I look right over the uh, garage. And I don't know, the, it's just the angle or, or something, but um.
I think it's just the angle, Peter. Um, Paige, if you go to that third page, uh, I'm sorry, whoever's uh, whoever's driving here. Um, basically, where that, where that tree is located, uh, based on my knowledge of the site from being out there so many times, is basically like if, if this, if this, if we could imagine that this entire uh, layout was a lot bigger than what we're looking at here, essentially where that gray um, slider is, um, where we're looking at here is basically where that tree is. And so you can kinda see the corner of the garage to the, to the um, bottom of the screen. Um, you also have the ground mount, basically, it's, that tree is directly to the right of the ground mount behind the um, behind the um, yeah, that garage.
If I may, uh, I just Googled it and that tree is actually there. You can actually see the stump of the tree that was cut down for the solar array to go in. Uh, and that's on a Google map right now, so that tree is actually there, Mr. Jepson.
Yo. I know, but.
But Mr. Jepson, I think the bigger, the bigger issue is, is, is not the tree. It's, is this more satisfactory in terms of the, 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 the lowering of the angle, the removal of the, of the top row and putting it to the, to the right side? And then um, uh, it, and the fencing, reducing your viewscape of the actual uh, solar array?
Yes, is it more satisfactory? Yes. Is it better than putting it on the roof? Most certainly.
Okay.
I mean, it, it seems to me it's a compromise, which, which favors uh, him putting it on top of his garage, which would hover over me, you know, so yes.
Okay.
And it's better than the original plan for sure, absolutely.
Good, alright. And are there any other neighbors, uh, you know, or, or butters who, who have anything else that they'd like to add this evening? Any uh, any other questions or comments from the board?
Uh, Mr. Wyffel, I would just like to point out that uh, Paige and I did look at this plan the other day, and we made sure that the appropriate setbacks for the right-of-way for the town on the street side and setbacks for lot lines were all in good form.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask that question again about the uh, the roof mounted over the garage. So if this fails, this particular ground-mounted unit fails tonight, does that mean a roof-mounted unit will be going forward? Just an either-or?
I think that's being directed toward you.
I mean, it almost sounds like it, it's a threat. Approve this or I'm gonna put up something.
It, it isn't a threat. It's, there is, he has every right by right to install a, a garage array. Um, it's by right, it has to comply with the state um, building code. Um, my knowledge, Mr. Alinsky has not made that determination, but he certainly can do it. He'd rather not, he'd rather, he, he needs one, and he would rather install a, an array that is more acceptable to his neighbors.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, question for either maybe Paige or Gabby on this. Uh, number one, are these changes reflected on the actual uh, drawings themselves, and are these representatives, these visuals sufficient for enforcement purposes?
Um, I, they are not revised on site plans and um, I do believe that they are enforceable. I mean, uh, I would suggest in this instance, just because of what a, a, a mess it's been from the get-go, I mean, really, that um, we not require that they change the site plans, because that's just, we just keep adding a, a more and more expense. And again, that's not anybody's problem, but I, I know in the past, like for, for example, Eight Mechanic Street, what we can do is we can mark up these plans, um, you know, where it says eight feet, we'll cross out. And we'll just memorialize what's been agreed and, and document it through the decision. Because it just seems, you know, once this is built, no one's going back to look at it. We'll have a documentation of what was required, but to require a whole revision to a site plan set, which I can only imagine costs several thousand dollars, just seems piling on for a situation that these people actually didn't create.
So Paige, if we do that, if we memorialize it, and then for whatever reason, not that I think this is gonna happen, but Alex does not follow through, do we have, um, can, can we go back to them and is there, I can't think of the right word at the moment, but.
Of course, yes.
Okay.
And, and Paige, would there be a requirement of some kind of an as-built after the fact?
If you wanna require that. I don't know that you need that, honestly. I mean, I feel you could almost send your inspector out there and, you know, visualize it and then sign off on it. But whatever makes everybody feel comfortable, I mean, I think at this point.
I mean, I was, I was glad that uh, that um, Mr. Gallagher went out there and, and uh, did, did take offs in terms of the setbacks from the street and things like that. And that he felt that it certainly met the guideline as well as you and Ron, so.
Yeah, we just wanted to make sure that fence didn't end up in the street right away, and then there'd be a whole issue down the road. Because uh, the pavement is actually offset quite a bit, but fortunately, that was not the case, and not that I. And not that I really thought it would be, but it just would, the way that everything's gone on this, it would just be par for the course that how poor Mr. Alinsky would have to move his fence, you know, when they go to plow the first time or something or widen the road or put a water line in.
Do you want to motion to close the public hearing, Kevin?
I just wanted to, hi, this is Josie Sullivan for Maple Place. I'm here with my husband, Jason. We just wanted to say that we're very happy with the plans and all the changes they've made and we're still in support of him being able to move forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one last time, if there's anybody else who'd like to make a comment, now's the time to do it. Comment or question. Hearing none, then I will ask Tracy to make a motion.
Make a motion to close the public hearing on May, on nine Maple Place.
Sir, second?
Second.
Tracy, I know you made the motion, but go ahead. Would you vote on that, please?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Kevin, yes. And I'll entertain a motion to approve. Just before we do that, just so everyone is aware, being a special permit, this will require a super majority, so a minimum of four out of five have to vote in favor of this. So I will entertain a motion to.
Sorry, how many members do we have present tonight?
Five.
Five.
Is it five? Okay.
Yeah. So I will entertain a motion to approve as submitted and with the commentary that Paige made earlier about making any adjustments to the photographs, et cetera. Do I hear such a motion?
So moved.
Sir, second?
Second.
Why don't we start with Ron?
Hi.
Jeff?
Yes.
Gary?
No.
Kevin? Yes. Tracy?
I feel like I need a drum roll. Yes.
Very good. So the motion carries and so it's four yes and one against.
So just for clarification purposes, we'll have a decision drafted. Kevin will sign it. It will be filed with the town clerk, which will commence a 20-day appeal period. And then after that point, the applicant would have to record the decision that the registry had deemed, and that would bring, when he brings evidence of that recording to the building department, I think then he could get a building permit, a real building permit this time.
So Paige, just, just for clarification, because I'm away and I'm not returning until the fifth, if someone else can sign it, that's okay with me as long as it's okay with you.
Is the board comfortable with having Ron sign it?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Ron's not practicing. I can sign his name, don't worry.
Let's get his checkbook.
Very good. Anything else on the agenda that you need to talk to us about, Paige?
Oh, heavens, no.
Very good. Then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Sir, second?
Second.
I think we can all do just I on this one. Very good.
Everybody.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.